Call to order. The regular meeting of the City of Dickinson's Commission. Let the records show that we are missing one Commissioner, Mr. Steiner. First item up is the Order of Business. Mr. Gah, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
No, President Decker, there are no changes.
Any questions for Mr. Gah on the Order of Business? There are no questions on the Order of Business, I'd look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve the Order of Business?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the Order of Business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the Consent Agenda, Commissioners, that you wish to discuss?
I was just curious on this Green Shades subscription agreement. If Legals reviewed this? We had this issue with some other software before.
Commissioner Frederick, yes. I have been working with Ms. Nomenoch. I have gone through that agreement. We've had it approved and what you have seen or what you have in front of you is the finalized agreement between myself, Ms. Nomenoch, and Green Shades.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioners? Not, I'd look for a motion on the Consent Agenda.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We do have a five o'clock public hearing. So we'll move right into the agenda. And the first item up is the Library Board membership or a member for the Board. And this will be presented by our librarian, our library director, Ennen. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President.
Good evening.
We do right now have one opening on the record. And we have had an application for that position. But then we have asked for it, just Brian Kopp. And now we're on, did you hear me a minute ago, or do I need to repeat?
Yes.
Okay. So Brian Kopp has applied for that position. He is somebody that comes with a technology background and is, would be a younger and more diverse member of the Board, bring hopefully some new perspectives on things that we're talking about. I would recommend that you would approve him for that position.
Thank you, Ms. Ennen. Any questions on this appointment? I'd look for a motion on the appointing of Mr. Kopp to the Library Board.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions on this Board appointment? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up is the 2019 Year-End Financial Report, and this will be presented by our accountant, Mr. Maury. Welcome.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. This report will be as of our year-end 2019. So we'll jump right into it and starting off with our Treasurers' Report. This is when we reconciled our bank statement to show our net working cash. So you can see we're right, so right around the 60 million that we've typically been at throughout 2019, just a little higher, as you can see, ending at about 63 million. With our investments, we had mentioned previously as well that, you know, we made all of our pension contributions at the beginning of the year. So we haven't seen any changes for quite a while here in our investments. So we're still finishing with just over 37 million total. We will see these numbers change because we'll make our pension contributions for 2020 in January, in January of 2020. So you will see those numbers at the next financial report be a little bit different. Moving to our 1% sales tax. So you can see the blue line is our 2018 numbers and the red line is the 2019 numbers. And you can tell at the very end of the graph, the December amount, we were 438,000. So we were about 118,000 lower compared to where we were in December of 2018. So it was a 21% decrease there. But overall, we actually finished the year $285,000 higher in the 1% sales tax fund, which is a 4.8% increase over the prior year. We had forecasted 5.2 million in our 1% sales tax fund, and we actually finished over 6 million for the first time since 2015. And we do always want to include this slide for the public, just to show that when we receive our sales tax collections, we do have two separate funds, our 1% sales tax and our 1/2% sales tax. So this will be the exact same trend in exactly half of the slide that you saw previously. Moving on to our hospitality tax. So you can see as well, that very end, we were about 21,000 lower in 2019 as compared to December of 2018. But again, we did finish overall in 2019 just over $5,000 higher. So a 1% increase in 2019 as compared to 2018. We forecasted 875,000 in our hospitality tax, and we finished it, we finished with just over 1 million, again, for the first time since 2015. Our occupancy tax, which we do show on this slide our full collection amount, but we take out a half of 1% for an administration fee, and then the remainder is paid directly to the Dickinson Convention and Visitors Bureau. But as far as where we were in December of 2019, you can see again, we were lower, 17,000 lower in December of 2019. So 41% decrease. But again, overall, we did finish $27,000 higher in 2019 as compared to 2018, which is a 7.5% increase. In our oil impact fund, you can see on the blue line in 2018, we were significantly lower, and that was again, as a reminder to the public, that we had some money that was taken to Dickinson State University out of our assigned funds. So after those collections were through, you can see in about midsummer of 2018, we're back closer down track of where we were. Although we did finish towards the end of 2019, that last collection, you can see we're about 187,000 lower in December of 19 compared to December of 18. So a little bigger decrease there. But again, overall, 2019, we were 277,000 higher as compared to 2018, which is about a 2% increase over the prior year. This is a new slide that we've never showed you before. This was something that we just added to our financial report for year-end and would like to continue to do going forward. This is from page three of your financial packet. And basically what this is showing is what we budgeted to start the year on our budget ordinance, where we finished with actuals. And then I would like to point out right away as well, the very bottom line on there, you'll see the transfer from GPT to general fund. So that's our oil impact transfer we budget every year. We budgeted 4.4 million. And with our finance policy the last couple of years, what we've done basically is wherever we've ended as far as revenues over expenses, we lower that oil impact transfer to make sure general fund, wherever we started is where we finished the year. So to make our general fund revenues equal our expenses, we lowered that oil impact transfer down to 2.8 million. And that's where we finished in 2019. And then this final slide here is also a summary that you saw in your financial report on page seven. And we just wanted to show this as well, to show that after the write-offs that we presented in, I believe it was the second meeting of January, we lowered our AR over 90 days from 76,000 down to 21,000 with those write-offs. So this is a snapshot of where we were as of our last age trial balance. With that, I'll do my best to answer any questions you might have, and city staff recommends
Thank you, Mr. Maury. Any questions for Mr. Maury or Mrs. Carlson? Hearing that there are no questions, I'd look for a motion on the year-ending financial report.
Mr. President, I move to approve the year-end financial report.
We have a motion to approve the year-end financial report by Commissioner Trustum.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Walla. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item up would be presented by Mr. Gah. This is the, we put out an RFP for attorney proposals. And Mr. Gah, you have a, I guess, presentation or?
Just a few comments. Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Just to kind of maybe provide a little, little background here to the public. In 2019, the Commission made the decision to go back to a contract attorney. We'd had a city attorney that was an employee for a couple of years, and when that employee went on for other opportunities, we put out proposals. Two proposals were received. And at that time, the legal services was, was coupled, so to speak, with the prosecution services. And McAuliffe Kellogg, who'd been the prosecutor as well, took over both of them, and that's, that's been the situation since then for, going on about a year. There were some changes in staffing at that firm, which kind of opened up an opportunity for the Commission to look at proposals again. And so that's where we are today. And two proposals were received. One from our current attorney, McAuliffe Kellogg. Their current fees for both services is 324,000. Their, their new proposal would see a decrease in that to 282,000. And the second proposal was from MLG, and they would propose 15,000 a month for both services for a combined fee of 180,000. And the lady, the lead attorney on that would be Haley Kreip, who was our former attorney a couple of different times when they were, when she was with McAuliffe Kellogg. So familiarity there as well. And those are the two proposals for your consideration and discussion.
Any questions for Mr. Gah or staff on these two proposals?
So we've reviewed both proposals for hours, and, I mean, they're similar. I mean, is there anything that we're missing here?
You know, they're, they're both very similar proposals. They covered the same types of things. They cover most of the same things that were in the job description of the city attorney and, and under the prosecution. We don't specify by this amount of hours. I can tell you both of them have experience in it, and it provided the amount of hours necessary to do the job.
I guess if I have one comment, I've looked through both proposals, and I think both firms will continue to provide, regardless of who we choose, adequate service. I, in the past, though, I have expressed that I do have a preference to having our own attorney and not having a firm. And Mr. Gah, you had gone through some just preliminary numbers, if we, and what that costs us.
I, I have. Thank you, President Decker. It's, it's one of those interesting things where if you think about both the prosecution and the city attorney services, it's probably more than what one full-time attorney can do, but not quite two. So that would be a little bit of a, perhaps to have the two attorneys we might really need would be, I think, too expensive. But could one really good, seasoned, well-rounded attorney do it? If we had two very strong paralegals, one for the, the general law side and one for the prosecution side? Perhaps. Staffing is an issue, and, and I think, I don't know that I'd, we would want to go out and hire somebody straight out of law school and, and have the same expectation that we, we have with our, our current firm. That would, I have trouble making that recommendation. And, and using some, some fairly preliminary numbers, I think that with one attorney and two paralegals at a minimum would probably be 325,000. Anywhere from 275 to 325, looking at different benefits from one low end of the spectrum to the other.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Trustum.
I think Mrs. Winko points that out in her closing remarks. I actually have it highlighted. No one attorney can do everything with the city's unique legal needs for both a city prosecutor and city attorney. There is simply too much overlap with city attorney meetings and city prosecutor, court appearances, trials, hearings, et cetera. I think she makes a very valid point. We've talked very often about having this position be internal, and, and that would be wonderful, but there are some significant needs. And we want whoever is in this role to have the time to be where they need to be and not be stretched where we have meetings without legal advice. And again, looking, we have a very unique situation where in August, when we were having this conversation for city attorney services, we had two great proposals from local groups. However, one had city experience, the other did not, with the City of Dickinson. And we held, McAuliffe was definitely, had that above the other. And in this situation, we have two great attorneys, again, that have done wonderful work for the City of Dickinson, and they have both really done a good job. So again, we're in a very unique situation that we haven't been in before. And it, it's tough for me as the one that's responsible for making the fiscal decisions for this community, to look at these two bids and say, I don't know which one is the most responsible. We have one, McAuliffe Kellogg, coming in at 282,000, and MLG coming at 180,000. You know, when we're in budget season and we're looking at department heads and saying, I'm sorry, that employee can't happen this year, and we're talking about raises, and in the past, you know, not being able to supply those, I mean, it's very hard for me to look at this significant of a difference and say that we can't take the most responsible
Any other comments? Thank you, Mrs. Trustum.
This is tough. Like I said, both are very qualified, you know. The difference, 100, $2,000 a year is also a large amount of money.
Mr. Gah, per the contract that we have standing right now, regardless of our decision this evening, there will be a change to that contract because we're on a month-by-month.
We're on a month-by-month. Either of these would be a two-year contract, which we think is very reasonable, as well as the current contract has to give a 30-day notice. So these are both dated to, to begin on, on May 1st. Quite frankly, if you, if you went, stuck with McAuliffe Kellogg, it could, we could probably make it April 1st, either way. I will tell you that the staff, we had different staff review this. We kind of had the same debate that you had, as far as whether this is a lot different. But sometimes is responsive bid and responsible bid the same thing? We looked at this saying, wow, this is a really great deal, but is it, is it too good of a deal? And then we, we also feel very comfortable with the current situation. Things have stabilized. The city attorney position is not something that has been stable. For the department heads that have been around not much longer than I, they've been through several. And like I've said, the staff recommendation is to stay the way it is. At this time, they understand it is more money. And I think Commissioner Trustum, you make a good point, is, you know, when, when this was done the last time, there was a little bit concern of going with, with more money. In this case, staff has kind of changed a little bit. I think it's, it's worth it, that the, that that is the, an appropriate way to go, and they understand what that might mean in budget time, I think. I think if you were to, to ask department heads individually, they, I think that's what they would share with you, because that's what they've shared with me at, at staff
Mr. President, may I?
Mrs. Carlson.
The question that came up was, the current contract that we have now is a total of about 325,000 with McAuliffe. That's including prosecution and the general contract with them. So there would be a reduction in that. I just wanted to state that.
For me, you know, the last time we decided it on this contract between Ms. Kreip and, I think the seller group was, you know, I think it was $40,000 more, but we also had an attorney that, in one side, that had already worked for the city and had that experience, and we had one that had no experience with working for us. In this situation, now we both, they both have experience, and we've got a $102,000 difference. It's, it's a struggle for me to, see, well, it's a struggle for me to approve that big of a contract difference. When we have both, we've worked with both, both parties, and both seem to do a good job, so.
And I see your point there. I think one thing, because I, again, thought the same thing. We're talking about two types of legal services now, general and prosecution. I think we would see a big change in the, in the prosecution side. Again, the court staff is, is pleased with how things are going, as is the police department. So there's, on one hand, there's this, and on the other hand, there's, there's that. It is a little bit different of a situation than what we looked at before, but like you said, it is still a, a big dollar difference.
Is this something we can talk about in closed session? This is contract negotiation?
If, if you wanted to negotiate the contract?
Yeah. The final negotiation, I guess, if there was changes to that. But as the bids are right now, I would say no.
Well, and our, our RFP for the bids does give the city the right to negotiate. And, and again, this, our thoughts were that this was something you might need to initially discuss tonight, have some thoughts about, and, and the decision could be made at the next meeting. That was our thoughts going into the process. If the Commission wanted to have a special meeting to, to discuss them a little more in detail, that was an option we wanted to put out, because it is, it's, it's kind of a gut-wrenching decision.
From what I see, MLG did not separate and give us an option?
They did not, in that case. That's something we, if you wanted to, us to go back and, and ask them about, we could certainly do that.
Well, there's two things that I, my preference, and, and Ms. Walla, I guess if you have any comments before I, by my comments, you have any comments?
Well, my, my concern is there any limits to the amount of hours that they put in. So, and Haley shaking her head, just because it said that three days allocated and then two hours per day, well, is there going to be a change in, in the pay if there's something that comes up that they're, you know, putting in more hours than what they figured into their RFP? No?
I think there, I think there's, if you read into the contracts, there are, you know, specific things that there is additional fees from both.
There could be.
For litigation.
For specific.
Outside of the normal scope of work. So there are.
Right, but I'm just thinking normal.
Like I said, one of, one of the two things, I, I would like staff to refine the numbers of, we've had two attorneys on staff in the past, and I think we've been very satisfied with both attorneys. Unique things have happened with both of them that led to them not being here any longer. So I guess I would like to see those refined numbers. And, and two, I would like to have it that we have a full commission here when we make this, this decision and have Mr. Steiner here. So if we table this for a month while you could provide those numbers on, on bringing, maybe, maybe it's just in-house attorney and not prosecution, and then we could rebid just the prosecution part. I, I, you know, I don't know. But I, I would really like to have the full commission here and then have this discussion again with Mr. Steiner here, so.
And with your permission, I would reach, I know both attorneys are here listening to this, I can reach out to them and ask them if they want to make any amendments?
No. I, I just, I think the bids are what the bids are, and this is what, I mean, that's how the bid process works. If we bid an engineer project, it is what it is. And we, that's what we take. So the bids are what they are. And that's why you have a closed, closed bid process. So again, two very good attorneys, two different bids. I'd like to hear Mr. Carson's, Mr. Carson Steiner's input on this, and I'd like to, the staff to refine, again, if we go to in-house. It worked really well until things happened.
Yeah.
You know, with the in-house before. So unless, Commissioners, you have other ideas and you want to approve something tonight, because this is up for consideration to approve.
I guess.
So would we, I mean, would we wait till the next meeting? That gives them two weeks to gather that information? I'm comfortable with that.
So we'll table this till the next meeting, and then hopefully Mr. Steiner will be here?
Yes. We would like that in the form of a motion.
Okay.
Mr. President, I would move to table the discussion regarding the attorney proposals until the next meeting?
I have a motion to table the attorney discussions until the second meeting in
Second.
Second. Mr. Frederick. Any further discussion? All in favor of tabling the attorney discussion until the second meeting in March, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. We'll continue this discussion at the next meeting. Next item, whoa, well, we're right at 5:00, so I don't think we want to go into the next item right now.
I have 4:58. I bet I can do this one pretty quick.
You think so?
Yeah.
Pressure's on.
All right. Item up is tobacco ordinance. Mr. Gah?
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. This is a first reading of an ordinance to amend Sections 21 and 25 of the City of Dickinson Code related to sale of tobacco products. Last year, the reading, an amendment came up to kind of update our ordinances a little bit on the enforcement side of things, and really some, some thoughts about strengthening a little bit and, and maybe talking about vaping, which was a big topic and continues to be. It's probably good we kind of took our time with this, because in the meantime, the flavor discussion continued to evolve, and right at the end of the year, the, the federal legislation changed in that the sale of tobacco products, the age was increased from 18 to 21. So what this ordinance in front of you is, again, it's a first reading, brings back most of the things related to sale of tobacco and enforcement, and strengthens up the, the regulations on that and the punishments a little bit, and adds also the, the 21 regulations. This is something that, like I said, this is the first reading. It will be a second reading and public hearing at the next meeting. Staff has one last discussion on this, but we feel this is a, a good compromise of some of the things that, that have been discussed over the past several months.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Gah?
There seems to be some confusion. So if you're 18 to 21, you can possess it, but you can't buy it, no?
Correct. And that's federal. And there are.
It's not illegal to possess it if you're 18 to 21. It's not illegal to possess it if you're 18 to 21?
That's the, the way we understand it. It's, it was a little bit vague and a little bit concerning at the beginning. And, and, you know, to me, this doesn't seem too awful, because when I was in Missouri growing up, I didn't smoke, but you couldn't buy it till you were 18, but you could possess it at one time when you were 16. That changed about 25 years ago. It's been, it's aging me a little bit. But yes, it's not possession, it's, it's sale.
And I pointed out to Mr. Gah, there are a couple typos in here that need to be corrected.
Yes, it is under 21.
Yeah, under 21, not under 20.
I just saw in some spots.
There's two of them.
In some spots, we talk about a fee, and in some spots, it's a fine. So I don't know if those have to be cleaned up either, but maybe that's how they're supposed to read.
We really wanted to show this to you tonight in advance of a meeting that staff has to discuss a little bit more, just to make sure that it was something you were comfortable with, because we knew there were some concerns with some of the discussions previously. And just wanted to get your feedback here again for this first reading.
The major change was the 21, right?
Correct.
From what I've seen, anyway. Do they, do they still offer that class? You know, the server training class in Dickinson?
It's, it's done online now.
So we're, we're going to amend that out, that they don't get the first one free if they've attended that class? Because that was kind of the reason for attending that class?
Um.
I mean, now they're just not going to attend it, probably?
Well, what it was before is if they could, they could do it, if they did it, they could waive the fees. So now it's just not waiving the fees.
But I think that was the, the point of that was to participate in the server training class. That was, I, I was here when we did that. I wasn't on the commission, but I was on the liquor side of it. And that was the, kind of the thing that, you know, if we get everybody to do the server training, if for some reason they serve a minor and they get caught, they get the first one, a slap on the hand instead of any monetary fine.
And I tend to agree with you. I will tell you, the last fall, there were four violations. Three of the, the merchants that violated it did come in, followed the appeal process to discuss it and agreed, and then completed a class for all of their folks, not just the folks that sold it. So I would agree with you. That's something we will discuss and consider if that's the feelings.
That's all I have.
Okay, anyone else? Any comments on the proposed changes to our ordinance? And this would be, let me pull it up here.
1689.
1689, okay. Thank you, Mr. Gah. And this is the first reading, which we will have the public hearing on the second reading. So that staff has time, and commissioners, you have time to go through this. And Mr. Gah, you said you're going to have an additional meeting?
Correct.
To review some of the items in here?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions on 1689?
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance, ordinance 1689.
We have a motion to approve, approve the first reading of 1689?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Now we'll go to the timetable. The timetable this evening will be presented by City County Planner Josephson. And this is the public hearing for the off-street parking. This is our consideration to approve the second reading and final passage of ordinance 1688.
Thank you very much, President Decker. President Decker, commissioners, Steve Josephson, City County Planner, just wanted to let you know that Planning Director Hadley is here in case you have any questions for him. As, as President Decker had, had mentioned, this is the second reading and public hearing. This amendment to this part of the zoning ordinance originally came forward from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The idea was to establish processes where, where developers, applicants could ask for reductions to the minimum parking requirements that are currently in the code. It applied for both an administrative process and also a process that would go to the, the Board of Adjustment. There, two meetings ago, there were some concerns from the, from the City Commission that, that some of the provisions in here were going to apply to, you know, residential development people on single-family, single-family lots. So having heard that, we came back with some language that, that stated that it would apply to non-residential zoning districts. Also put an exemption in. There's a part in the code, 39.09.009, that deals exclusively with, you know, with parking vehicles on, 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 on single-family, single-residentially-zoned properties. So it would exempt these, these provisions, it would, the general provisions in those cases. There was also a case, too, where there was some original language that allowed for two unlicensed vehicles or red, or unregistered vehicles to be stored in a garage or screen area. And that language has been restored. So it would go back to the, there would be no change to that original language. It would still stay as two. There have been no changes to the ordinance since the first reading. And here to, you know, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Josephson. Any questions for Mr. Josephson on ordinance 1688?
Mr. Josephson, the, besides the, our planning department, the city, the buildings and code enforcement, they've gone through this and made their comments to you?
I'll ask, I'll ask Planning Director Hadley, you know, Hadley to address that, but I believe they're familiar with this.
Okay. Because they're mainly the ones that are going to enforce this. Yeah. And I see Mr. Schwent's there, so.
Well, and some of this will be, will also be enforced. It'll be taken care of at, at site plan review. But if an applicant comes in, and the applicant comes in and wants to apply for, you know, for a reduction, it's the city administrator who decides which, which department is going to go ahead and handle this.
Okay.
Mr. President, yes. And commission, I, I believe the entire staff, we've gone through, and this has been available to the, the entire leadership staff. My, Mr. Schwent is here. If he has any other concerns, he can, he can surely voice them. But I, I think it's, it's basically clarifying and cleaning up some issues that were confusing in, in the existing parking ordinance, and loosening it up a little bit and allowing some flexibility from the administrative standpoint as development happens in town. It, it gives me the ability to lessen the parking requirements. That, that really is one of the main goals that we addressed in this.
Have we had anybody interested since we've started this discussion?
Well, Dickinson Hills, I know, is interested, but they haven't pursued.
Right.
Amending their plan yet. There, there's been a number of, we've got some items on the Planning Commission agenda this month, that one of them may take advantage of that as well. So yes, I think, I think once the word gets out, and I think we've talked about, like the mall, Peggy's here with the mall, you know, obviously, it's going to allow some outlaw development at the mall without doing any more paving. We literally would just take the paving that was there and utilizing it for some future development. So similar to what we've done in the front, so.
Okay. Any other questions for either of the gentlemen while they're here? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is a public hearing. So I will open it up to the public. If anyone from the public has any concerns on 1688, please come forward, state your name, let us know your concerns. Anyone from the public? Anyone have any concerns pertaining to 1688? Seeing no one has any concerns with ordinance 1688, commissioners, you have any final questions? Now I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I would move to approve ordinance number 1688.
We have a motion to approve 1688 by Commissioner Trustum.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move into HR report, and Mrs. Nomenek will be presenting that.
Good evening, Mr. President, commissioners. I have the hiring journal for this month. First on the list is police officers. We currently have three openings. We did do interviews recently, and I believe they are making their selection for those that may be passed up for a second interview to the chief and captains. We also have some communication specialist positions. They had a good number of applicants for this position, had a really good round of interviews, and had a hard time deciding. So they decided to do second interviews. And those just took place yesterday. So a decision has not been made yet on that. We did have two internal openings for a communication specialist, too. And we did hire within for both of those positions. Those positions have been filled. We had a position open for animal control officer that was filled with a, a prior employee that worked for the city in a couple of different positions. So we're happy to have her back. Route collections operator, we had an internal opening only, and that was filled with an internal applicant. And then since this was printed, we did open collections route operator externally, and we did open two street maintenance operators externally.
All right. Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on the hiring journal? Have we seen applications for the positions? Have we seen more applications or the same?
Um, certain positions, now that you asked that question, I just realized we, we are missing our police chief on here, and our fire chief on here, and our captain for, for fire.
Did you just tell us something we didn't know about?
No, no pink slips. No. So we've been getting a good number of applications, again, you know, through, like, interest-type applications where they're not filling out a complete application. But we're working on that. The fire chief, we've been, we got a good number of applicants so far, and that will be open until the 20th of March. And then the fire captain position was opened internally since this was printed as well. So.
All right. Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a IT annual report by our IT manager, Mr. Meyer.
Good evening, commissioners.
Evening.
So I'm going to take you through a basically yearly type update. I see some of my slides formatted funny when they transferred to this template. What you see here is, beginning of the year, we were asked to update the project management to basically make the workflow easier, simpler, more manageable for the staff. So we actually took and did that. I believe staff is very happy with that. We also added in a few other niche features, including SMS notification for developers, as well as an activity log that basically traces step-by-step how projects move from start to finish within the building and planning and engineering department. With that same software, we also linked it to our GIS maps. So what that means is, in the field, our inspectors can actually bring up on their phone a map of the city, click on that parcel, have access to all the documents that we actually store internally with regards to that property involvement. And so it's really fluid, really easy for them to use within the field. Many of you, of course, got the website update middle of last year. We were asked to make it more friendly, more engaging. So we took, did that. We actually have over 200 different locations that we actually reference, have points of interest within the City of Dickinson, Anthony, food, the parks, recreational-type activities. One of my staff members also updates the community events regularly, keep that kind of the progression and just constantly changing on the web. Some of our hardware updates, we, of course, got approval for a brand-new server. That server hosts the grand majority of our servers. We moved to a virtual infrastructure instead of a physical infrastructure. What that does, over, over time, reduces the overhead. We don't have to reduce, replace as many physical boxes. We can compartmentalize software. So if a single piece needs an upgrade, we can upgrade that without affecting everybody in the community. We do basically annual replacements. They're based on every three years, we touch a machine. We have basically a custom desktop initiative where we replace the minimal number of parts to basically bring that up to spec and standard. What that does is that lowers our replacement cost for desktops. Unfortunately, tablets and laptops, because they're more of a closed ecosystem, we can't replace it just parts. We have to replace the whole unit when we do it. So you can see there, we replaced 34 within, within that year, as well as five laptops. I believe last year, it was somewhere in the realm of 11 to 19 tablets. If you visit the city website at any point in time and scroll to the bottom, you'll notice this lovely graph formatting here. What that does is it actually shows live, real-time numbers as far as our percentage of expenses, revenue, both in general and enterprise funds. We've also basically brought, brought reports more into the view of the employees, so that they have kind of real-time look as to stuff like their leave, electronic W2s, and essential stuff like that, that really wasn't transparent to the employee before. They'd have to come to payroll, ask that. So we're trying to put that into the hands of the employee. Then, of course, one of our largest projects for last year was our timekeeping initiative. We break it down into five different phases. The first one, of course, was developing the, the network product. That was, basically, we started it roughly October of 2018, and we ran all the way through 2019 on that piece of software. We're currently in what I consider Phase Two, where we are developing the mobile framework. We're about 75% of that, about ready to enter into Phase Three, where we will transition staff from that network version to a mobile version. What that does is it brings us onto one singular code base. So as, from an IT perspective, we're updating a singular point of, of code, and it's affecting all the users. In, in the future, we intended to transition from being a full-time keeping initiative to being an employee portal, where they will go to access any type of information, any type of forms that, that we want to provide them basically with. So ease of access without them having to dig in 50 different locations for that information. And Phase Five is added on features that some we maybe haven't even thought of yet. So this is essentially what Phase One looks like, just a basic network client. Shows them everything from their current leave balances to where their leave will be at the end of the year, so they can plan for things like vacation usage, so that they don't use, lose those hours. It also shows them their basics, what they're getting paid per hour. You can see on the bottom, there's a basic time sheet, similar to what they had seen in the past. We tried to keep it extremely familiar to them, to what they had been doing on paper, so that there wasn't a huge learning curve to go with it. This is just a basic timeline. Like I said, we started this project right in, in end of September, early October. In the interim between criminals and that, we had developed a, a basic Excel sheet that kind of led into this project. By November 6, which I know seems like a short time period after starting in only, starting in October, we actually ran our first successful test. We started in the basement of City Hall and worked our way out from there. By February 12, we had actually pulled in every single employee in the city, and we're successfully syncing that data from the timekeeping system into our financial software. So we eliminated all that manual keying in of those timekeepers as well. And that is when we considered what I consider Phase One completely. Phase Two, as, like I said, we're developing a mobile framework, looks similar to this. Basically, the start of the mobile framework began as a means to incorporate mobile punching. The inspectors in the field, how do they punch without having to run back to City Hall? How do they punch out for lunch? How do, how do you punch in a police officer that's in the field? Things like that. This, this phase, of course, is starting to incorporate already some of the, what would we consider that Phase Three, Phase Four timeline of, how do we make this an employee portal, rather than just all of our time? I said, here's some basic timeline features, how we kind of add it in. When we got to about October of When we got to about October of 2019 and October, November, we added in our supervisor dashboard. This is essentially what a supervisor sees when they log in and see everything from who's clocked in that they supervise. How many of their employees, percentage wise are in there? Some rounding data, so how does rounding affect their employee punches? Are they benefiting too much? Are they donating too much time to the city? As well as the calendar that shows paydays, birthdays, anniversary dates to try and give that really close knit community feel so that supervisors involved with saying, hey, congratulations, you've been here five years or happy birthday. Basically things like that. And now supervisors can of course approve all leave, all punches and time sheets from mobile devices already. As I mentioned, open enrollment in October, November of this last year, when we went through open enrollment, we built the HR department and open enrollment portal so that the staff members could go through here, fill out what they were electing for benefits and basically have a real-time total of what that would cost per month and how that would affect their pay stuff as well as simplify the process so they weren't constantly filling in the same data every single year. The data will actually incorporate in this year as we enter an open enrollment. They'll fill in with what they previously either had for benefits or what they've elected in the past. As we look at what's next, you know, as far as mobile goes, we're going to, we deal with what's called anticipated leave that deals with determining where their leave will be at. We have to incorporate that as well as requesting leave and some various other things dealing with document libraries in those kind of phase four, phase five initiatives. When we look at what this actually saves the city in the long run with us doing this in-house, so the timekeeping software versus what we were paying for Cronus, well, actually saved the city about $29,000 annually. Our permitting software, which has actually been in use since about 2012, saves about $4,500 annually. Our custom initiative for the desktops, which we initiated about three years ago, we started down that road, saved us about $12,000. Our solid state initiative, which I began, the actually one within my first year of being here, with in terms of time saving and power savings, we actually saved the city about $50,000 a year. And that's figured basically 100 employees working per day. I know our staff is much greater, but we're not always here. So 100 employees at 250 days, less than five minutes a day at $25 an hour, which is actually less than what the average wage is for the employees. Comes out to about $50,000. Our virtual server initiative in terms of hardware and software and licensing costs saves us about $10,000 is what we figure. Per grand total, about $105,000 annually for a saving. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Meyer?
Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
Thank you. You did a good job.
Great job, Aaron.
All right. Next item up, we have a fire code update and this will be presented by Fire Marshal Sully.
Welcome.
Good evening, President Commissioners. This is the update of Chapter 13, the fire code of city ordinance, basically bringing our fire code in line with the building code that is currently adopted, bringing it to 2018 version. Lot of amendments in here, not very many big changes. Most of the changes are just year changes, some clarity changes that were made by the state building code that we have to reference in our code because the chapters are identical. The big changes we did make, you see a new section in here, 13.08.110, which is a daycare ordinance. This is something we added because it's nothing that was ever codified for our department. Standards we've been using had never been in city ordinance. So we were lucky enough to find something actually in the International Residential Building Code has an appendix that they don't adopt that we're going to adopt that will give us a standard that we can enforce on daycares in a residential home. The other major change is in the Chapter 11, which is the ordinance that would have, or the code section that would have required A2 occupancies to be sprinkled there over 300. We have chosen at this time to remove this, to do some further education, further look into the code and the businesses in town and we'll look at it again at the next code There's any other questions or concerns, I'll try to answer those for you now.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Trustum?
So Fire Marshal Sully, the updates to the daycare ordinance or the addition, I should say, this is what we require already when people apply for a special use permit for a daycare?
Some of it is actually, majority of it is actually lessened compared to what we were doing for some things. Some of it was an increase. It looks at, now it'll look at family daycares and group daycares in a residential home as the same standard. We kind of had a little bit different. We gave them a little bit more leeway in a family, a little bit more stringent in a group and it kind of brought the two together and they're really more even playing. Some things that were required that you may not want in your home if you're still living in that home, so that kind of lessened a little bit. The increase from the family side is that it's requiring interconnected smoke alarms. Where an older home that didn't have those, we didn't require that until you were at group daycare. That's the increase for a family, but it's pretty standard on a new home built after mid 90s, right?
So what would you say the cost is roughly for interconnecting those fires?
Very minimal. The devices are eight to $10 apiece and then the wiring, electrical, electrician to fish at the lines, depending on what it's built. Again, it's any home that is pre-1996 that is doing daycare. I don't have those numbers yet. We haven't decided what we're going to do. We're going to take the next couple of years to kind of find out which family daycares don't have interconnected smoke alarms. Tell them this is the standard, what you should be doing and we'll work on a timeline or a way to get that up to date. Horrible to say they're grandfathered in, but it's something we have to look into. But anything new at this point, we'll have to meet this standard.
So the passage of this today will not retroactively?
No, not retroactive to affecting anybody.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Fire Marshal Sully? This is the first reading. The public hearing will be on the second reading. So if there are no further questions for Marshal Sully, I'd look for a motion on, this should be ordinance 1690, correct? Any other questions?
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1690.
We have a motion by Commissioner Frederick to approve 1690.
Second.
The second by Commissioner Walla. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up, we have an annual fire report and that'll be Fire Chief Seabock.
Thank you, President Decker. Commissioners, you've all received a copy of the 2019 activity report for the Dickinson Fire Department. Tonight for our viewing public, we're going to try and summarize that a bit for you. I always struggle with the, ah, look at that. In 2019, we remained pretty constant department structure-wise to how we looked in 2018 as represented by the organizational chart that you see there. You see referenced our ISO classification, insurance service office classification of three. We achieved that in 2017 based on our equipment, our capability and the programs of the department along with other city entities such as the infrastructure of public works and water mains, hydrant availability, GIS mapping, dispatching capabilities. It all plays a part in this. That ISO classification ranking helps determine what insurance companies charge for premiums. Just prior to this meeting tonight, I received a call from a local insurance company questioning where a house laid as far as which department responded to it because they were quoting a price and it was influenced exactly by that class. So an ISO class three, we are one of 3,400 departments nationwide. That's a three. So we're proud of that and the city, all the departments should be proud of that. We respond with full-time personnel. We have full-time positions of 18, volunteer members of approximately 27. That's fairly consistent with last year. Our first people out the door is the shift on duty. Depending on what's going on as it ramps up from there, there's an alert crew of four to six people that's made up of full-time and/or volunteers. That also triggers an officer in charge of that alert crew and if things are really bad, of course, it's a general alarm. And that's how we are structured to serve the community. Our equipment is all current and I can't tell you how nice it is to say that to you. A couple of years ago, this slide didn't look that way. We had several pieces of apparatus that were out of date by the NFPA standards for fire apparatus. Pumpers shouldn't be in service longer than 20 years. An aerial apparatus shouldn't be in service longer than 30 years. Of course, that depends on the community and the amount of activity that piece of apparatus sees, but that also plays into the ISO rating. And as of last year, every one of our major apparatus is in current years where they need to be. That is tremendous for the city of Dickinson. It's tremendous for like the ISO rating. The next up apparatus that the city will have to look at replacing, if you go by the suggested years of service by NFPA, will be ladder one, which is 100-foot aerial. Seven years left for that one. That'll be a very pricey piece of equipment. They are today. So that's something to be cognizant of, something to be aware of. We're very proud of the fact that the city of Dickinson has worked with us and enabled us to achieve what you see on that chart. Total incidents in 2019 was 764. It's a 12% increase over 2018, a 17% increase over 2017. And as the community continues to grow and change, the dynamic of the community also continues to change, we're not going to see those figures lessen. They're going to continue to increase also. Total incidents, as you see on the slide, 764. Average response time, eight minutes, 19 seconds. Commissioners, we want to do better than that. We want to be down around that six-minute response time. Now that's from the time the call comes in until the time our truck is on the scene. Eight minutes and 19 seconds, that's not bad. That's an average, however. Sometimes it takes us longer than that. Sometimes we do better than that. But right now, we have one shift on duty that covers the entire community. What we're seeing, especially in the overnights with our volunteers coming in and our ability to staff two locations, more often than ever before, we'll see, we'll hear on the radio, station one goes out on a call, shortly thereafter, station two goes out on a different call. That's how the dynamic of our responses is changing. Two different calls, same time, two different stations responding and we have the ability to do that. That's a testament to our people or to our volunteers. It's a great thing during the daytime when we have one shift on duty covering both sides of the community, that's starting to affect response times. Immediate concern, not necessarily, but a concern again you need to be cognizant of as the community continues to grow and things continue to change, somewhere in the future it'll have to be looked at that there should probably be a shift on duty at both locations. In the immediate future, you know, probably not. In the near future, probably so. Before I turn it over to Fire Marshal Sully, I will stand for any questions you have on what you've seen so far.
Any questions for Chief Seabock?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Trustum?
Chief Seabock. Do you have a rough estimate on the cost for a ladder truck?
It depends on the bells and whistles, no puns intended, that you want to hang on it, but it can be a million dollars. You know, one of the things, Commissioners, that we did right, when we purchased our trucks, I'll go back to that slide, ladder one and ladder two are what's called a quint in the fire service. They have their own pump, they have their own hose load, they have their own onboard water tank. They can act as a pumper. What that's done for us is this, each one of the engine one, engine two, ladder one and ladder two each have a 1,500 gallon per minute pumping capacity. ISO, when they evaluate the city, they come up with a amount per gallon that the fire department should be able to flow through its apparatus. For the city of Dickinson, what they've said we need to be able to do is 3,500 gallons per minute. By how we've purchased our trucks, that our ladder trucks are not just ladder trucks, they're in essence a multipurpose vehicle, we have 6,000 gallons per minute of pumping capacity and we can run those trucks as an engine if we have to. So that's pricey, Commissioner, pricey.
And we do put the older ones up for bid afterwards, right?
Oh, yes, yes. We try to get what we can for them.
The problem has been they've been very old.
Well, for the position we've been in, Mayor Decker, yes. If we stay on a replacement plan where the trucks we're replacing have some value left to them, that's not a position we've been in.
No, we haven't.
You know, so that could put a different spin on things also.
I think the last two we sold, they were way past.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, they were.
There's not a whole lot of value in vehicles like that, so an apparatus like that. But this ladder truck, even though, you know, like you say, in seven years, we put that up for bid, it should have, it should fulfill the need of volunteer force somewhere.
It should have some substantial value left to it.
Right.
At least we would surely hope so.
And like you said, you know, they just keep going up in price.
They do. At this time then for the next, I'll call up Fire Marshal Sully.
Thanks, Chief.
This is just a quick slide showing you the numbers that the Fire Prevention Bureau did this year. We had over 1,900 fire prevention activities. That's everything from inspections to plan reviews to demos, lectures, things like that. Got a little bit of a breakdown as far as the inspections we did, 852 routines, that's anything we go into, first look into a building every year, 504 follow-ups, that's an inspection we have to go back for and correct the violation we may have found in the first one. Construction inspections are just the things we go and look at as a building's being constructed and 169 miscellaneous for other things such as daycares and other things. And this is all done with the two, myself and the senior fire inspector doing fire inspections and the line firefighters doing their inspections as well. So as you can see in your report, we have over 1,900 locations that we need to do inspections of annually and we are falling well short of that with the staff we have. There's a lot more locations than we have than we have time for, but we're doing the best we can. We try to organize them with priorities. There's some locations we go to annually and there's others that we go to semi-annually or even part of the report. Any questions on the fire prevention side?
Any questions for Fire Marshal Sully?
I'll turn it over to Assistant Chief Barrows.
You could have moved the slide for me, Mark. Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is our overview for the training of our department members. That's both time and volunteer. And as you can see, there were 15, over 1,500 training course hours. And there's one bullet I'm going to add to this that we should have captured on the slide. What that means then is there were just a little under 6,400 hours of training of our total members. So our personnel put in just a little under 6,400 hours of training. We also, as you can see on this slide, the new driver operator, existing driver operator, continuing ed company and facility, those are categories that we get graded on for our ISO classification. Within those training hours, as you see, the new driver is two hours and 30 minutes and existing driver, five hours and 30 minutes and continuing on. You see that most of the hours are in our company, continuing ed hours. So what that means then is within these graphs or in these hours are specific fire department trainings such as fire ground tactics and strategies, hazardous materials, auto extrication, technical rescue, confined space and structural collapse. And of course, all of those training hours. And of course, all of those training hours are captured and maintained by every, for every department member within our fire programs application. You also see on this chart that we had four firefighters certified in firefighter one. That is a requirement of our department. They either have to have that certification upon hire as a full-time firefighter, or they have two years to obtain that certification within two years of hire as a volunteer. The firefighter two certification, you see there's not a requirement. However, we have a pretty dedicated group of people that will continue their certification. And we had eight of our members continue on to get firefighter two certification. And that is following NFPA 1001 standard 2013 edition. That's full-time and volunteer. There is some other certification that you see on there for our emergency medical response. Again, that was not a requirement of our people. We require CPR and first aid certification. Forty-eight percent of our members have chosen to advance their training and certification in emergency medical care, as we are now providing assistance to our Dickinson ambulance service. Shows another pretty strong dedication of our people to continue that training. You see there that there was six of our members became emergency medical responders and two EMTs. And we currently have four of our members in the EMT class with the Dickinson ambulance starting this year. One of the classes that is not on the slide that I would like to call out because I'm very proud that we were able to bring this instructor in, his name was Dr. David Griffin, and he was part of the Charleston Fire Department that lost nine firefighters. And he has since gone out internationally and talked about his story and how important it is for departments to train to prevent a line-of-duty death and the importance of us knowing our job. So, we take great pride and try very hard and work very hard to provide quality trainings for our members. I get to do one more. Okay, this is on our department health and wellness. I think most people out amongst us know that it can be a very physical, demanding job that we have elected to participate in, and also mentally, it can be very difficult with our mental well-being. So, we strive very hard to provide resources for the physical aspect of our firefighters and the mental wellness. So, not only the working out part to be physically fit, but also medically fit by providing physicals for our members. The department has also implemented changes in our department trainings, facilities, and our procedures to help lower cancer risk. As you all know that we have lost one of our own to cancer. And so, we know the importance of lowering those risks, and we're going to do everything we possibly can within our means and budgetary constraints to get that done. Some changes have included personal decontamination on a scene, getting that carcinogens on our gear washed off. We provide wipes, as you see on the slide, to get it off our hands, our face, our wrists, any skin that's exposed. And then coming back to the station and providing equipment to wash it, decontaminate it, and with the Station 1 remodel, not providing, not cross-contaminating, bringing those contaminants into the living quarters or into the working space of Station 1. Station 2 already had that designed into it, so it worked out well for us. Okay? And with that, that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'll attempt to answer them as best as I can.
Any questions for Assistant Fire Chief Barrows?
One of the things for the future I would like to say is we're going to try very, very hard to equip our people with a second set of bunker gear. So, that is one of our goals for next year. So, that if that gear is dirty, they have opportunity to wash it and have another set ready to go for the next call. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
And the final slide, Commissioners. We don't always cost the city money, although Deputy Administrator Carlson may disagree with that comment. Linda, you don't have to, every time I call you, you know, answer the phone by saying, "How much?" But this not only shows the grant dollars and donations that we bring in, but it also shows the partnership the fire department has with the community of Dickinson. A five-thousand-dollar grant from ConocoPhillips in 2019 for fire suppression gear, bunker gear, that's, you heard Assistant Chief Barrows talk about that. Not only are we using our existing city budget, and we have support from you Commissioners, whether you knew that or not, and we have support from Joe Gah for that second set of gear and why that's needed, that's understood. Marathon, five-thousand dollars helped us get our first set of, God forbid we ever need them, ballistic vests that we now have on the trucks for that active shooter response that we also hope we never have to do. The Truist, ConocoPhillips employees, Truist again, Rough Rider Electric, that goes to, whether it's providing a meal after a meeting or a training, or helping us purchase department jackets, member jackets, or other means of recognizing our people, that's how that money is used. What that doesn't show is also in 2019, we received from the state a Homeland Security grant for eight-thousand-four-hundred dollars. We put in for a grant from that group every year. That eighty-four-hundred dollars goes solely to help us maintain and ensure we have the equipment that we're expected to have to complete our role in regional response with the state of North Dakota. We have a regional response commitment in hazardous materials response, and also a regional response commitment in structural collapse. That concludes our summary report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Seabock before he goes?
This might be your last annual report, huh?
This, in fact, is my last annual report. I didn't mean to say that smiling.
Congratulations on your retirement, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, President Decker and Commissioners, I do think that's important. We haven't talked a lot about it. It's actually, Chief's last day is April 3rd, which is one month from today. You know, it's not very often anymore we get to send somebody out the door into retirement with forty-two years of service, starting as a volunteer and ending as a chief. That's a wonderful story. You heard Ms. Nomenick say earlier, we're looking for the next chief, and the boots are indeed big to fill. And I thank Chief for his service, and he's leaving the department in a very, very, very good position.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Moving along, we have the police department. First up is, we have a report, and is the, the report is the tips in the Badlands presentation? You're going to be handling that, Detective Clouser?
Yes, Mayor Decker. Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. And so, I'm up here tonight, I was here for a very similar thing about a year and a half ago related to Badlands Crime Stoppers, and a grand opening of sorts, providing something to our citizens, our community here to help kind of strengthen the relationship between them and the police department, essentially giving them an opportunity to have another avenue of communication with us to protect anonymity and to incentivize information as it comes. Because as you know, that this whole thing rests upon the flow of information from the community, and when I get the calls from friends and officials and people, sometimes from Chief Dossinger, why things are not moving along a little bit faster, oftentimes it's a stalemate with information that we know is lingering out there. So, the reincarnation or the grand opening of Badlands Crime Stoppers has facilitated a lot of things for us here at the police department. Since the beginning of it, we've had a little over fifty tips right at, and of those, there's been a number of arrests and/or criminal charges that have come through the information provided, the Badlands Crime Stoppers. And so, we're just continuing to build on that, and we have our Vice President of the Badlands Crime Stoppers Board of Directors here tonight, Bob Larson. I'm going to turn it over to him real shortly to talk about what this next element of Badlands Crime Stoppers is. But, you know, essentially, he's part of this board that was organized by Dean Rummel back at the beginning, and they are steamrolling forward with donations and making sure there's money there for rewards and, you know, helping the police department along the way to make the community a safer place for you guys, your constituents, and such. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over, I guess, to Bob Larson, our Vice President of Badlands Crime Stoppers, to talk about tip 411, which officially launched today. Check out our Facebook page for more information on that, too, the Dickinson PD.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Detective Clouser says, my name is Bob Larson. I am the Vice President of the Badlands Crime Stoppers Board of Directors. Badlands Crime Stoppers Incorporated is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) that was started in 1985. It kind of fell off the map for a while, and it was reintroduced in 2018. Our purpose is to receive crime tips and assist law enforcement in the resolution of crime and criminal cases in the City of Dickinson. It is in partnership with the Dickinson Police Department. We want to thank Chief Dossinger, Detective Sergeant Clouser, and Captain Ciani for their partnership and all the assistance they've given Badlands Crime Stoppers. Badlands Crime Stoppers is, it has currently seven independent members of the community that are, make up our Board of Directors. They are Christopher Coats, Ron Liskel, Brian Ryder, Joy Shook, Jerry Wahlberg, Dean Rummel, and myself. Reward money in dollars used to promote Badlands Crime Stoppers are dependent on generous donations from local businesses and private individuals. No tax dollars are used for rewards and/or promotions. Thank you to our donors who have been so generous, allowing the board to invest six-thousand dollars in the development and deployment of a new smartphone app to help residents to connect with the Dickinson Police Department, to find information, view alerts, submit anonymous tips, all from their smartphone. The app is free to the community and can be downloaded via the Google Play Store, iTunes App Store, O-Bot, or by visiting the Dickinson Police Department website. Badlands Crime Stoppers smartphone app and the Dickinson Police Department website enables the public to share an anonymous tip with the police and allows officers to respond back to create an anonymous two-way conversation. If the tip leads to an arrest, it is possible that a cash reward of up to a thousand dollars could be awarded, all dependent on the level of the information and the crime. In addition, residents with the app can assess agency alerts, social media channels, and important information to help fight crime from the palm of their hand. If you don't have a smartphone, you can simply text your tip to tip 411 and begin the message with the key word "Badlands Tip" to directly reach a Dickinson Police Department officer. All residents are encouraged to download the Badlands Crime Stoppers app and help fight crime in our community. Everybody always says, "Somebody should do something." Now they can. It is available right now, and we encourage everybody in the city to take advantage of it. I do thank you for your time, and if there are any questions, I'll sure try to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Any questions for Bob before? This was a great thing back in the day, 1985, and, you know, getting this started up again, I think, is, you know, another great thing for our quality of life in the City of Dickinson. And I know that people are really appreciative of your effort and time that you guys put in, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item up, we'll move into engineering, and we have a determination of sufficiency of protest for the 2020 Millan overlay, and this will be handled by City Attorney Winko.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. This evening, you have three resolutions in front of you. They relate to the three special improvement districts that were adopted earlier this year regarding the Millan overlay street improvement special assessment districts. So, with help of City Engineer Kubis, we have run the mathematics on this, and just so the Commission is aware, that the statute and the Sentry Code does provide that in the event the governing body finds that the protest to contain the names of the owners of a majority of the area of the property included within the improvement district, the protest shall bar the proceeding against moving forward with any special assessed improvement project. So, essentially, boiling that down is, in the event the protests for that particular district exceed fifty percent, then the city would be barred from moving forward with the district. Now, having run the numbers and looking at the information that Mr. Kubis and Ms. Marshick diligently put together, just so the Commission is aware, in Zone A, which is identified as Zone 1, approximately two-hundred-and-eighty-one properties would be assessed. There were sixteen protests that were received, so the total percentage of protests came to seven percent. Also then, in Zone B, which is identified as Zone 2, a total of sixty-nine properties were, would be assessed, receiving five protests with a total number of two percent of protests. And then finally, in Zone C, with a hundred-and-twenty-one property owners being assessed, the city received five protests with a percentage at four percent. So, based on the calculations, all districts did not meet the necessary requirement to bar the city from moving forward with these districts. So, the question before the Commission this evening is just to determine whether the city is able to move forward based on those percentages. That doesn't prohibit the city from having additional conversations with landowners and property owners that may have some special circumstances with regard to their own special assessments. For example, the gentleman that was here the other night with the property up north. So, the sole question before the board this evening is, do these special assessment protests rise to the level of barment? And if they don't, then the city can pass Resolutions 1, 2, and 3. That would be on the packet tonight, which would be 08-2020, 08-2021, and 08-2022.
Isn't it 08? It's 08, 09, and 10.
That's correct. You're right. I'm skipping years.
I wrote it down here to make sure I got it right.
Correct. That's correct. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody had any.
Any questions for Mrs. Winko? Mrs. Winko, can we? Each resolution needs to be separate, right?
That is correct, Mr. President. We adopted the special assessments individually, so we should do also as well with the resolutions.
So, any other questions for Mrs. Winko on these districts? This is pertaining to our 2020 Millan overlay street improvements, special improvement districts of the City of Dickinson. Not I'd look for a motion on 08-2020.
Mr. President, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve 08-2020 by Commissioner Frederick, second by Commissioner Trustum. Any further questions, comments for staff? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. On 09-2020.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Trustum. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. On 10-2020.
Mr. President, I'm moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Trustum. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Finished with engineering for the evening, we'll move on to public works. Mr. Zeroff, you have Houston's Engineering Landfill Lift Station task order.
Yes. Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Good evening. Before you, I have the task order for City Project 202005. This project is to install a leachate stormwater lift station at the landfill site. It includes a force main from the Dickinson solid waste landfill site to the city wastewater treatment facility, which will allow year-round pumping. The lift station is proposed to be a manhole lift structure and a force main PVC sized for full build-out of the landfill site. The landfill operations need to be able to remove leachate stormwater from the site year-round and will improve the operations and meet regulatory requirements. The existing force main does not allow year-round operation and pumping as required. Now that we know the landfill... Now that we know the landfill has been able to be expanded for a number of years, we're moving forward with this phase of the landfill expansion, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Zeroff. Any questions for Mr. Zeroff? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on Task Order 20-01.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Trustum, Task Order 20-01.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Zeroff, you have Ferguson MIU replacement agreement.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commission. This amendment will allow us to add another 400 registers replacements. The battery life on these registers and MIUs are fading rapidly, so we'd like to add another 400 as an amendment to the current contract. Back up a little bit, this is to replace the boxes on the meters so that we can pick them up as a drive-by, and then the MIUs will be more of a permanent structure and a fixed network system. We're working through, working with the residents and utility billing, and we were looking at it this way instead of doing a massive project at the time, is to try to keep working towards this and work out all the kinks before we look at doing a monster or a major project and replacing them all. We're continuing to try to inform residents of what our goals are and how we're proceeding with this, and I guess if you have any additional questions, I'd be glad to answer.
How's it been going?
It's going slow. The original contract with Ferguson says that they do three notices to the residents. After three notices to the residents, it comes back to us. And so, first it went well, now it's hard to contact those people sometimes to allow us in the house to replace the register. But that's what takes quite a bit of time. So we've come up with additional door hangers on our side, so we have additional notices to the residents, and I think, so we're continuing to work through the process.
They had any issues getting the boxes relocated to the outside?
No, and we're not pushing it. We'd like to get it to the outside. If they're not wanting it to go to the outside, we put it as high as we can in the utility room, and then we'll have to look at that when we have set up our collectors on how that, how it works. But we're also trying to, I just talked to the water chief, too. We're trying to get this information to the builders. We'll probably try to put some at the builder's show, try to get those wires in ahead of time, so they will be on the outside. But we asked the property, and we'd like to get it outside, but if you don't want it outside, we'll just put it as high as we can in your utility.
Mr. Zeroff, these are for additional 400. How many total do we have?
We will need originally, or about 5,000 meters, or the MIUs replaced, additional.
What's the life expectancy then on those?
These, the current MIUs, the current MRIs are called, the new ones are called the MIUs. The boxes had a 20-year lifespan, and we got them about 2,000, I think. 15 to 20, they said it's remarkable they've lasted as long as they have. So it's the batteries on those that are dying.
And so when we go to read if it's dead, it shows that we can't get a reading?
Can't pick it up.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Zeroff? Now I'd look for a motion on this agreement with the additional 400 units for replacement of the MIUs.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Frederick to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Walla. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. And?
Thank you.
Mr. Quam, you have a consideration to approve a board member for the Urban Forestry Committee.
Actually, it's, oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow Commissioners. It's actually a change to the forestry ordinance that we're proposing. To give you a little background, it's been about a year now that we've had the urban community, or urban forestry committee actually started meeting, been meeting on a bimonthly basis, and we're at the point, I've met with the planning commission as well, and we've expressed the need to separate and become an entity on our own. And the thing is, is we went back to the ordinance to look at when the, what the ordinance stated about the urban community, or the urban forestry committee, and basically, it was pretty sketchy. And so we went and proposed, put together some changes to Sections 37.10, .010, and to the definitions, and just made some better wordage on some of the definitions. And then on Section 37.10, .020, we've outlined the urban forestry committee, what their duties are, and outlined it a little bit more, clarified it for them, as well as the member makeup, where we're getting some of the people, and also clarification of how to elect members on that on a regular basis thereafter, once it's being studied. So I guess I would entertain any questions on?
We're bringing this forward, excuse me, Vern's got a good group together that are willing to be members of the forestry. We wanted to present it to Commission to get your blessing and input on the makeup of the board, which is in your packet of what we're looking at for a makeup of the board, and then to, again, pull it from the planning commission and have it the own urban forestry board. So kind of a combination of, you know, getting your approval and direction of pulling it out of the Commission, and then working towards changing the ordinance and code to have the members that are listed here, which includes one member from the North Dakota University System, one member from the Park District, four members at large, and then also, we have in there one member of a city commission as a liaison. And that, too, we wanted to present to you guys to get input if somebody on the board would be willing to be liaison in the forestry committee. So that's, I think the more, the reason why we're here tonight, want to get direction, and I do think Vern's been doing a great job. We got a good group that is willing to meet and willing to move forward and do a lot of the things in urban forestry.
It's also been a good sounding board, and a lot of our members on the committee are finding that it's a meeting place of different opportunities. We've received wood chips from Montana Dakota Utilities, which Jake Zettel is on there, and we've provided that to the Park District as well as for our own uses. We're getting, working with the college to get them tree program and tree removal program, and we've been working quite effectively with them. And so the thing is, the potential is really high there as far as what it can accomplish.
I guess I just have two comments, questions. One, for the members at large, we're not exclusively, even though we've put in here representing natural resources, utilities, and education, it's just kind of a guideline. We're not saying that they have to be from that to actually be at-large members.
No, it's more reflective of who's already on the committee, so.
And general public.
Yeah.
I just didn't want somebody that's outside that realm, and then there's one, say, general public person already, and then, well, I'm not going to apply because I'm not into the other, the other three.
Oh, sure, yeah.
And then, two, the discussions we had with the Weed Board. Have you furthered anything with Mr. Quam to incorporate this?
That will go to the Board of Adjustments.
Okay.
President Decker, that falls within the code enforcement. So yes, we had discussed this a little bit, but go that either way.
Put it on the Board of Adjustments, okay. So we get that taken care of also.
Okay, any other questions for City Forester Quam?
Tonight, just direction, and then you'll bring this back in ordinance form?
Yeah, I believe that's, you know, we had a good group, and then after we looked at our code, we figured we'd better come back and adjust the city ordinance and code on the forestry, so we can make it a good group or legal group and move forward. So, yeah, it's just kind of your blessing, and then we'll have to look at changing the codes on this. And then, two, if the Commissioner is willing to, I know you're all busy, but, you know, think about who would want to be maybe a liaison with the forestry committee.
We have a couple of new members coming on in June, we can probably.
You can assign accordingly.
That's true, so that leaves you and Commissioner Walla.
Funny.
So, yeah, if you would approve us moving forward, we'll bring it, we'll be bringing it back.
And the only changes to 37.10, .002 is the approval of the appointments by the Commission, essentially.
Yeah, and I don't think, you don't hear anything redlined, but I think the current one just says that forest rule, we create a committee, is pretty much is one sentence, is what it currently says.
I think a lot of the boards in town, everybody comes before us, and we just approve.
Yeah, President Decker, Commissioners Vern and Gary are correct, because most of ours have some specifications. This one was pretty much as simple as there shall be a forestry board, period. So, yes, this will need to come back to you as a first reading, if that is the direction, and then a public hearing before adoption.
I think you're going in the right direction, so bring this back to us, and then we can look at it and have a couple of readings of it, and go from there and get our comments, how we tweak it after the first reading, so.
Agreed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have nothing from planning or building code enforcement this evening. Move on to Item 10, Public Issues of City Concern, not on the agenda. If there's anyone from the public has any city concerns that were not on the agenda this evening, please come forward, state your name, and let us know your concern.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. My name's Randy Fleck. I own the property at 366 21st Street East. I'm sure you're probably not aware of it. It is a drug and alcohol, I own the building, there's a drug and alcohol company in it. I've got some pictures here I'd like you all to look at. I have had nothing but problems with road and grounds since the 7th of October. That frontage road is absolutely destroyed. I have spent out of my pocket $7,500 taking care of that road. Now, on the second to the last page of these pictures, you'll see where my $7,500 is at. It's pushed up in a heap on the east side of my building. Now, they went in there today, finally, they did grade it out, they put in a drainage pipe, and they did that, they finished that about 3:30 this afternoon. When I left there at 4:30, there's already a great big pothole. The problem is, is my clients don't have access to my building. And again, this has been going on since October 7th. I was told for weeks and weeks and weeks, oh, it's groundwater. It's groundwater. I was born and raised here. I was born and raised in a farming community. I know what groundwater is, okay? That was a main water line leak, and I told Gary, and I told Darrell that, oh, no, 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 there's no chlorine in that, so it can't be a mainline leak. Well, at 30 below, when I have a river running through the front of my building, that's a problem, and that's not groundwater. Finally, about a month ago, they had an individual come in, and my understanding, he was from the city, came in and tested that. They went down and they listened. Two minutes later, he came to me and he said, absolutely, we have a leak, there's gurgling down there. And my question was, well, why wasn't, when that water was tested, why didn't it show that? He said, because that line is deep enough, the filtration, as it comes up, it didn't test for any chlorine or fluoride or whatever they were testing for. So they came in, they tore it up, they fixed it. But unfortunately, at that point, it had saturated that frontage road so bad in front of my building. Twice, I've had East End Auto down there with a wrecker pulling wreckers out of the trench in that road. I've had two individuals that had damaged their vehicles. They come to me, they're livid, and I understand it. All I can say is, hey, I'm sorry, that property doesn't belong to me. That belongs to the city. I don't know where to go from here, okay? I'm losing business. I have people that will not come to that building because they simply cannot get to it. I was told today by my FedEx guy, no more. I will not drive through that kind of mess anymore. The mail lady said, we got to do something, because she's walking through water ankle deep in front of my mailbox. Now, what really raised my concern was about three weeks ago, I had a river running between my building and the building next to me. The older quonset now belongs to Justin Glass, there's that older quonset there. My concern was, and I talked to a contractor, I said, what's that doing to my foundation? He said, eventually, it's going to wash away under your foundation, you're going to have foundation problems, okay? Now, the roads and grounds, Gary and Darrell both told, well, go ahead and pave it. It's not my property. Why wasn't the original owner of that property, why didn't he pave it? I don't, that is a small business. I am a retired veteran. I do not have $40,000 to pave that road. And then the roads and grounds individuals, the leadership, said to me, you know what, if you pave it, you take care of it, we will maintain it. That is not true. I've seen it over the last five years. When we have that last huge blizzard that kind of closed that area down, I paid $1,500 to have that road graded, the city wouldn't do it. They said, no, that's on you. So we need to figure out what we're going to do with that frontage road. I understand the problem now. They let it go so long that you would have to go down eight to 10 feet to find solid ground. Well, I understand they're not going to do that until spring, but now, if you drive, and I would appreciate, I'd love for you all to drive by my building. Right now, the whole front of my building, the road is shut down, road close signs on each end. They did come in, they put kind of an access road, they put a pipe in, they put an access road in. But like I said, an hour and a half today, and it's already potholing up, and there's a great big hump. I'd love for you all to come down and see it, but please don't bring a low-tolerance vehicle, because you probably won't make it into my parking lot. So I just think you should, I want to leave these pictures for you. You look them at your leisure. If you've got any questions, I will write my cell phone number on the top of that. But at this point, I'm through. I don't know where to go. You know, the individual that was out there this afternoon, we kind of got into a heated discussion, and I simply told him, I said, you know what, you guys have blowed smoke up my backside so often, I'm afraid I'm getting colon cancer. It has been every, oh, we'll call you back. Well, leave him a message. No, I don't get any phone calls. When I did get action is when I went. When I did get action is when I went to the newspaper, because I'd had enough. The Dickinson Press came down, they did a front page story about it. Amazingly, a couple of days later, they come in, they graded all that out, they put up a bunch of cones. Well, the problem is, is that's a frontage road, it's not real wide. Justin Glass, he has a lot of equipment coming in and out of there. He gets vehicles parked on that northern side of that frontage road. That pushes all the traffic to my business into that, that sump hole or that mud hole. I just, I, I don't know where to go from here. So I thought I'd present it to you, let you all look at these pictures. And, and the thing is, is you need to remember, 7th of October, I called him, I said, hey, we have a water main leak on. Nope, nope, nope. It was over under Justin's glass, he did cement his in, they had to tear up quite a bit of his driveway to fix it. But unfortunately, at that point, that location is so saturated. And, and now, like I said, that's, I think we figured it up, it was $7,680 I spent to maintain and grade the road, haul gravel in. That's all sitting on the east side of my building now on city property. So now, this spring, I'm going to invest that much more to bring that, I don't know what they're going to do with that, but I'm going to have to bring that, that aggregate back in there, into that area.
Mr. Fleck, where is your building built?
Um, the, the, my wife owns a business that rents the building from me. It was built in two, God, I'm thinking 2008, 2009, by somebody else. The building belonged to somebody else. I purchased the building about four or five months ago. It belongs to me now.
Okay.
But, you know, and I asked, and Gary and Daryl, I've never met them, just talked to them on the phone, my understanding, they work for roads and grounds. And I asked them, I said, if those conditions were in front of your house, or in front of your business, would you tolerate this? Daryl told me, said, absolutely not. Don't watch it.
So, Mr. Fleck, if I could interject, I am Gary. And I did come out last week and talk to your wife about this. And I would love to discuss this all night if we wanted to, Mr. Mayor, you know, about different things. So I guess like, whatever direction the commissioner wants to go.
And, and I believe, when I did talk to you, that's when they did, they came out with the scraper. The problem I have with it is, the money that the city has spent in the last five months to grade it, to haul the material out that's saturated, the ice, now what they did today, I'm sure that you all spent thousands. And it all could have been alleviated.
It could be alleviated if that, in front of there was improved, then we won't have to be dealing with this at all. The other property owners throughout that paid for the improvement of their property. If you remember, Mr., we had that as a, as a project. Mr. Fisher said that he would do it a lot cheaper and talk to the property owners throughout there and do that street in concrete. Everybody did accept that, except Mr. Fleck, and so that's why it stayed as a dirt frontage road at the time. So that, if, you know, that would be the way to solve this, is to get this street improved.
My question, did Mr. Fleck own the building when that street went in?
Yes.
No, I did not.
Well, you owned the property, I guess.
No, we did not.
Okay.
No, no.
You told me that Mr. Fisher talked to you, and you said you weren't going to pay the $40,000.
I never talked to Mr. Fisher.
Okay.
I, I did tell, they had, they sent a letter out to us, and I did write him back, and I said, you know, I'd love to, but for a small, mom and pop sort of, and we didn't own it. I did talk to Ray, the individual who owned, who, I, my understanding is he's back into H&R Block now. He's the one that, that owned that property, and I did talk to him, and Ray said, nope, if you want to pay it, you pay. Well, I didn't own the property. And, and it's city property.
It's city right-of-way, and that's a discussion that, you know, you don't quite understand, is that the city doesn't go in and just build streets on these new subdivisions, something like that. The other, the other property owners paid for that street. So if we come in and pay for your street, I mean, that doesn't make sense, because the other property owners paid, paid for all the other street improvements.
I agree. New subdivision. That road has been there, well, since I've, I've been in Dickinson now 15 and a half years.
That's where I'm having the biggest issue. Why, there was even a building permit issued. We do not allow any new buildings to be built on gravel roads, so I don't know how this ever even got.
That was done...
In 2008, how this ever, ever even happened.
Like I said, that was Big K that built that structure. And, and I had the same question with, from, from roads and grounds, I don't know if I had asked Gary or Daryl, I says, how did you allow Big K to build that without improving that, that road in front of it? I don't know.
But, yeah, I mean, it...
It was before all of our time.
It would be before our time, it should be done, but that's, that's the way to solve the problem. And I, and I, I would like to maybe address a couple of comments. There was no smoke blown before, you know, anywhere. There was a leak in that area. We thought it was groundwater for a long time, we could not find the leak. So if you can't find a leak, we're not going to dig up hundreds and hundreds of feet of concrete, street, lines, everything else. We could not find that leak. And we did get somebody from out of state, actually from Arizona, to come in and find the leak. So we don't have that capability. Usually, in a small leak, it comes like that, and eventually surfaces quickly, not surfaces, but we can tell where it's coming from quickly. In that case, it wasn't. It was such a small leak that been going a long time, we had to have somebody else come in and identify it. Once we identified it, we fixed it right away. So right now, we have the problem of a bad area in front of Mr. Fleck's business, is full of water. We went, we, being the city engineer, myself and Daryl, last week went and looked at the area. We came up with a game plan. We stopped at Mr. Fleck's business, talked to his wife, told him what we were going to do. She was all for what we were going to do, agreed with us, that we were going to try to remove the, the water from in front of the business, put a drainage to get it through our right-of-way on the, what would that be, the east side of his business. He still has access to his business, that's why we, we put a culvert in there to try to get the water to run. So we provided an entrance to his business, which would be a lot better than it was before. And we're trying to get the water to drain. Any additional improvements? We can put it back once it dries to gravel, but any additional improvements would, are usually borne by the property owner. And that's one area that maybe we should look at extension, extending that road, doing, doing an improvement district and assessing the adjacent property.
And I don't have a problem with what they've done. I guarantee it's better than it was 24 hours ago. However, five months? You know what, I was born, I know, I know this area. At 35 below, you don't have groundwater coming up. And that's what I, oh, it's groundwater, it's ground. No, it's 30 below out there, it's, in fact, the one day, it was 57 below with the wind chill. I said, at 57 below, you don't have steaming water running in front of a building that's groundwater. No, that has down, has frozen down deep enough, that has stopped that groundwater. Thank God you all brought somebody in, but the individual that did that...
So, Mr. Fleck, if, if we can't, if we can't locate its source, that's the difficulty, Mr. Randy, and that's what I talked to you about.
But they kept telling me it's groundwater, it's groundwater, it's groundwater.
Anyway, I'm... We're, we're by that. So, Mr. Fleck, if you want to drop that off, we'll continue to look at and monitor, we'll make sure, the commission will make sure that we're continuing to monitor that road and update the, you know, try to keep it passable for you till spring, when there can be some kind of solution to come up and fix the road in a, in a better manner.
And I appreciate that. But now, my concern now is, looking at the weather, they're calling for some moisture that that they put in there, like I said, an hour and a half after they finished, I already have a great big hole coming in. And, and I know it's a waste of their time and their assets to continuously bring a $300,000 grader out there to level that off. I'll do what I can, but I don't have that kind of equipment. All right?
Yeah, if you want to leave those pictures and you, put your cellphone number on, on the top of those pictures?
Yes, absolutely, I'll do that.
And you can leave that with Rita, then?
With Rita.
Okay. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
And she can distribute it to us, she can get them scanned in and get us your pictures.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any concerns not on the agenda this evening? Please come forward and state your name from the public. Anyone? Seeing no one else from the public has any concerns not on the agenda, close the public issues segment. Commissioners, are there any items you wish to discuss this evening? Just one thing for your consideration, we're going to have a lot of contracts coming up this year. Start development, elder care, DDA, probably missing one or two in here. Start to gather your information as commissioners, positions that we are going to take. In our budget, we do have some placeholders for some items, so you can look back at the budget and see what those placeholders and those dollar values are. We're going to have myself, Commissioner Frederick, and Mr. Gah and Mrs. Carlson will sit down and review some of these contracts and go through them, and then we'll have a presentation once the budget rolls around where we're at. And I'm sure Start Development will bring in their numbers. And then, but we need to, like I said, do your homework on some of the budgeted items that we have, and if you can look at the budget book and see that what placeholders are for future payments to these contracts. So. Any other comments? Now, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Some...
Second.
We're adjourned.